Order, we have a quorum present and then some. First order of business, the minutes from the previous meeting which we're doing eight thousand twenty-two. Review them please if you haven't already, I need a motion to accept them or amend them.
Want to come from Charlie, I guess. Is there anyone who's here?
Yeah, we, we had a quorum of four. And also, we had no members of the public that attended it. Especially. Once. Someone has read the minutes that wish to make a motion. Get a second. Is that for discussion? I should know how is it just. After we get a motion. Yeah, well, the motion, the. The intent is to approve or amend them, but. Get a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, is there a second to that? Avren. Thank you.
She's wandering. I can hear in the halls. Can't see her, but I can hear her.
All right, there's been a motion made to accept the minutes and it was second, you had a point of discussion there, Charlie.
I was just wondering, we have a. A motion and seconded. While we zoning the area. Is there any movement on that?
No, because we haven't gotten anything above and beyond what we see in these minutes. The individuals that came before us. That were not part of the agenda for that meeting, but we allow them the opportunity to discuss things. They never came back to store us with any plans to show we lots that they were gonna. Identify.
Charlie, you want to go ahead and get that chair in?
Westwood. Thank you.
So we're not going to consider anything about that today.
No, no, there's nothing to consider. Yes. There's nothing to consider, well, it was mentioned that. There was a vote taken to say that planning board would be taking this up. Once we had something in hand. But essentially, nothing has happened. Any more discussion on those minutes? Wait, no, we got a motion that was a second. Oh, I'll call the question unless Michelle, do you have a?
No.
No, okay, so the favor of the motion is presented, that the minutes. Anybody opposed? So move, thank you, sir. Oh.
Start here for me.
Okay, thank you. The agenda for this meeting states in new business review a request to temporarily. Alter egress from the Circle K business and Central Street permitting commercial traffic to use Orchard Street and Field Street. To the junction of Central Street. And. What I want is I want to hear from planning board members. My own views, I'll express them if that's going to start the ball rolling, if others. Want to do so first, by all means. I want to hear from the applicant on their request for the driveway. Exit onto Field Street and if members of the public wish to express any concerns sent you here. We'll, we'll take those comments. So let's start the ball rolling with planning board members. Well, let me start the ball rolling. I have my concerns about this request. Field Street is residential street, Orchard Street would be the intersecting. Intersection Field Street to Central Street of commercial traffic. Driving down that street, those two streets and exiting onto Central Street, especially. If there's any delivery trucks that might have difficulty with the. Streets and the shop turns. I have my concerns about, that's my two cents.
It'll be a big bottleneck. Right there, right where it goes on to Central Street. Especially when you're using the tractor trailers. And equipment. Everything else, not to mention that the roads are really aren't. They're not that, they weren't designed for that kind of traffic. Or that weight.
I'm not sure about the weight and I agree with you, but I'm not sure about the weight, I didn't mention that along the. Property line. With. The. Danforth property, it's previously Jackie McAdam, there's a ten-foot right of way for a waterline. That runs from Central Street to Field Street and then down Field Street. That's. Gives me concern, there's also the end of the. Shoreline, thank you, there's the end of the shoreline that goes on to the property. Essentially now used by the Circle K company, but essentially that. And I believe Circle K ties into that, that sewer line.
And they're flushing out every Friday, town is.
Flush it.
They have to flush that, that catch basin every Friday.
It's one of them.
Yep.
Interesting, well, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, but I spoke to Ralph Susie about this and. He had his concerns about. Having commercial traffic. We didn't get into Orchard, but sent to the two streets, give access to Central Street. Any more comments from planning board members?
Is there a weight capacity?
Is there? I'm not, no.
Or could we enforce a weight capacity?
We don't have a weight capacity, jump on this. But I'm not aware of the weight capacity, there are vehicles that use the residential. Roads like UPS trucks and things like that and delivery trucks that deliver furniture. That and fuel trucks. So I, I don't know that there's a weight limit though.
And couldn't you go from Field Street? And I don't know the name of the street that goes straight up and then you can turn. On Rhode Island, isn't it, that goes out towards by Hannaford?
Uh, goes, oh, I mean, where it forks, that, that's, that's New Jersey. That's New Jersey, that intersects Rhode Island.
It wrote, yeah, so you could take that right-hand turn onto Rhode Island and be out at a, at a light. So there's two avenues.
Oh, come on, you don't have to come down.
So they wouldn't have to go down. And, and make the sharp corners and the turns as, as you're saying, I think it could be more of a, a straight stretch, right?
Uh, I don't know about straight part because you, you, you. Start down Field Street and then essentially. That, correct me if I'm wrong, if someone knows better, is that? Ohio.
Ohio.
That is Ohio, okay, so then Ohio forks and becomes New Jersey with Ohio going to the left. It's not straight, but it might be a little less discombobulated than trying to make the turn at Orchard even coming on to Central. But my concern is, it's a residential road. And. The board hasn't viewed favorably on commercial ventures on residential roads.
And how long is this supposed to be tied up for potentially?
I believe it was eight weeks.
Eight weeks.
The applicant is here.
Just ready.
Oh, Mr. George.
Yes, sir.
Hi, how are you, sir? Essentially, the application says six to eight weeks.
That's correct, I would, I would spend more of the.
Yeah, I don't want to be rude or anything, but things happen, I won't be surprised if it went longer, but that's just. Nothing seems to go.
And there's, is there a way that you can go in and out that one entrance or are you going to block both entrances?
The, the midway entrance is going to be open and the intent of this egress is intended solely for Dunkin' Donuts customers. To your point, there's no way we can one hundred percent guarantee that a bigger truck isn't going to try to get back there, but I think we could manipulate it. Jersey barriers that only have passenger vehicle, you're through there. Not intended whatsoever like for our delivery trucks or. Propane delivery or, or what have you.
Because on the other, what I'm thinking about is, on the other hand, we have people that are employed. And I don't believe that you would get paid if you were not working in that type of setting, especially at a Dunkin' Donuts. And that's probably their livelihood, we're talking about. You know, coming before Christmas and heat and oil and, and people's jobs in order to be able to make ends meet, paycheck to paycheck.
But this just affects the window.
Right.
Doesn't shut down the business.
But it still would take away from business and it might take away from the staff. Because most of their business, I would say, is drive-through.
Shut down the business, that's, the business was that for the window.
As a, as a planning board member, I'm going to speak as a planning board member now. I will speak later as a safety officer. But as a board member, I do not see putting. Traffic on those regular two streets, so that especially Fields, the end of Fields Street wasn't, wasn't meant to have a lot of traffic. Off to residents in that area. One lady there that's very, very concerned. About what will happen to this, if we allow. You're going to be putting a large amount of vehicles down Field Street and down Orchard Street. Onto Central. As Heidi said, you can turn and go the other way. That's, that's still, you're still in residential area, that's all residential. So I am not in favor of this at all.
Any more, Charlie?
I heard a comment about, about Val Susie, I didn't hear what his opinion was. Does anybody, officials have any opinion on this? No.
Of course, master, there's no feeling, I, I can understand. But we also have a lot of security concerns of. The employees there, I guess I kind of have a question for Ed on that. I'm sure you, this is the first time you change fuel tanks at a, at a store. How much of the area is the infrastructure, is it just fuel tanks and tanks and pumps? What's the extent of the, you know, what are we looking at? It's, it's the tanks, the, the pumps, the dispensing area, there'll also be. French having to go back to the building somehow to access the electrical rooms. So it's pretty extensive, um, the first portion will be yanking the tanks out. And we'll be driving sheets in the ground, if you know what those are.
Sheet pile.
Sheet pile length. So that whole side of the, of the. Property will be fenced off. If we bring in the six-foot-high chain link fence and encompass our whole work area inside of that. But basically, the whole left entrance all the way back to the back corner of the building. Where Dunkin' Donuts is and the whole, what we call the forecourt, but basically. The canopy and all that, so the only access is going to be on that midway side of the property. Do you see any concern for them to be open whilst under construction? Uh, no, it's, it's very typical, to be honest with you. Yes, so access will still be to the front door, there's still people, customers, please, we'll still be able to come in another front door to access that. That is correct, totally isolated. I do understand the concerns about exiting through the residential Central.
Well, it's, it's an emergency thing too, you know, we've got three towns that come through here. For this hospital, emergency vehicles or if, God forbid, we have a structural fire and we need. Mutual aid. They usually, you know, they come right, right straight through there. It'll be pretty tough for them, they'll have to make alternate routes for sure, other than going through there. And I'm sure Tom will work with them and figure out where they got to go. Whether it's down to Wausau or somewhere else through the development, depending on where it is. You know, and you've got. Well, East Mill, nothing covers a lot of areas as far as ambulance services go, so they. I mean. There, I think they go sixty, eighty miles out of East Mill and Lock it maybe don't.
Right, right, but just, that's, that's not going to affect. Traffic coming in Central Street would only be if they want, if they went into Dunkin' Donuts. Would be the only traffic that should be coming through there.
So now the Central Street will be closed?
No, no.
I understand.
Not a set, no, you will have a lot more traffic coming on to Central Street down on Orchard Street than you have. Currently, but no, it wouldn't affect as far as anybody being able to get in. Wouldn't bother any of that any, any, at any, yeah.
Because the only increase in traffic would be at the pace of the Dunkin' Donuts window.
Which, no, go ahead.
The only thing we need is Dunkin' Donuts, that's for the drive. And we can definitely, usually. It's busy, but that is eighty-five person per person. Well, and we. Up the one, two, four, now, and among the hours, you guys want us to hire somebody to lead the traffic, that should be all cars. You know, trucks, the red trucks, and like he said, you know, you make it safe and light.
Put the concrete Jersey barriers in there, so the delivery trucks put in. Well, now that we're talking about. Your, your drive through, get a, please, that.
Oh, no. I know. Okay, but I.
On the other side, no.
That's where.
So could I ask a question, you said you could hire additional staff to traffic?
Like if we could, and I usually make them in town, or whatever we have to do to make sure everyone's safe. You know, we'll do that, we're willing to, you guys need to just get certain time, I mean, obviously, most restaurants. So, you know, like. It would done well.
So in, in keeping the store open. If it doesn't work, don't spout out at the first second, by keeping the store, where's that traffic?
So I'm going to be restricted to the main line, to expect us at law. It's supposed to be an entrance and an exit. That's right. Alright, so they can, they can exit the way they're better, or they go, so the only thing that's going out, going to Field Street, that's the idea anyway. So we're supposed to be restricted to.
And then we, like you said, it's going to be restricted to one lane. For the safety of the lot of the way.
Can I ask a question? The, the Medway side, what are we talking about?
He started about the side, anyway.
Medway Road.
Going east.
Right, oh, yeah, the other side, the other side, Tony, is where the tanks are, that's going to be closed completely.
Well, then, the, there are tanks where the large tankers unload. And you've seen them over the years, I think there's three tanks.
Right.
In, in that buffer zone area, and then there's the individual tanks that serve the pumps.
But those are all on the east, on.
Further east, right, yes.
That's what he was talking about, Medway, he was talking about the Med, you know, the father, the father entrance, that's what I'm calling.
Tony, I was wondering if there's anybody from the public that's in opposition to. Opening those roads up.
Yeah, I, I wanted to hear from public since individuals are here.
I want to hear. This public here.
Yeah.
Huge concern.
Let me, let me, just make sure, are there any more comments from the planning board members? Not to cut you off, but I just want to, and it's not going to end it, it's just I don't want to cut anybody off.
You said you had a safety side?
Oh, I'm going, yeah. No, but I want, I want to hear.
Okay.
Okay. Let me ask, Mr. George, is there any more on the application that was submitted to the town that you wish to discuss?
No, that's, that was only agenda there, we knew, I have talked to Evan. Both possibly on a temporary basis, cutting some of the trees down, you know, where the tanks are. Into the landscape area, so unfortunately, some of those trees that they planted thirty years ago. The roots are going to get destroyed and they'll probably, I would say, a pretty good chance they're going to die, so. We'll hopefully get permission to take them down and replace them.
I'm sorry, do you have your hand up?
Yes.
Yes, please. Identify yourself.
Not bragging, I mean, to Lincoln Street. Given my position with Circle K, the comments that I make tonight are strictly as counsel bragging, not. General manager at Circle K law audit. But before I do that, playing devil's advocate, I have made ninety-five percent of my deliveries here. That if this does happen, that their deliveries are to be only on the Medway side, my parking lot. Which is where the airback is, we have laid out plans for all my delivery drivers, so they would not even be anywhere close to said area. And we have two sheds back there, one of them is Dunkin', one of them belongs to my store. All my deliveries that go there will be done by hand. All my delivery drivers have made aware that they need either bring in by, they have little forklift machines and they come into the front door. Or they need to tow them by dolly, so that has all been made arranged, so there will be delivery drivers on that side. That being said, the only concern that I have is the waterline that is, or the sewer line that is there, there is a massive manhole cover. That is there, I'm just worried for if it is buried, if someone drives over it, if a pickup truck has damage to turn out of there. That is the only concern that I see from Council bragging inside, is there any information that we can give on that? Again, just worried about that particular piece of, this property.
Tom might jump in on this, but when I spoke to Ralph. We just acknowledged the infrastructure that's there along the. Residential property and the commercial property, waterline and the sewer line that comes on to. The Circle K property terminates there, but that business uses that. Line, that waistline.
Correct, okay, just that huge manhole cover and the part that sheds out quite, it sheds about two feet of the ground. That's the only part that I have concern about from the town aspect.
Yeah, and I've got some concerns because it's obvious that vehicle traffic has been using that, and I don't know over thirty years. How much of that. Waistline or that manhole is more visible today than it was in nineteen ninety-two. When this facility was first, well, planning.
I can confirm that ATV traffic is known to use their bicycle, either motorcycles have parked there and walked up. So there is ATV traffic, that is already, even a few Jeeps, even a couple of Jeeps, so it is definitely misused.
Yeah. Any more comments? Let's go to the public, Jane.
Thank you, Jane, I'm one time, you know, street, so I am the homeowner of lots of town. So I have a lot of concerns as a homeowner, so here I'm speaking my whole. First of all, I am very sympathetic. As a homeowner, I'm just very concerned about the level of traffic, eighty-five cars going by my house that don't. You said they have like. None of that. Highway commercial to residential, and I know that you have to take some trees down to make the road, so it goes around. Close road, so it doesn't hit that manhole car, so it's the neighbor on the other side across the street. So the safety of all those vehicles coming by my house, you know, it's been spoken about like going down. On Field Street and then it can exit the road, you know, called the road, and then Field Street, just the bottleneck there. I mean, I heard that you say people, they could go right, so there's different ways after you get there to get out. I was happy to hear that it won't be, they're going to try to divert the, you know, larger vehicles. There's a lot currently that. The tree line in the barrier, the privacy, that tree belt, because we have got very well, all those trees that were asked to be planted. There's not a lot of dead ones, you know, they're not very tall, I'm concerned about my privacy and that tree line as it is, and that's even more. Appreciate the fact that it will be, you'll, you know, put some new ones in the ground perhaps, over time, perhaps that will. Appreciate the fact that it will be, uh, you'll, um, you know, put some new ones in the ground perhaps, over time, perhaps that will. That will help, but right now, there's, um, the barrier there, the the privacy from highway commercial to commercial into. It's it's very, in my mind, it's very, like, the light that comes to here and the noise that comes with me, and I know there's gonna be a lot of noise. So this to me, just as a homeowner, it's just that it's happening, you know, a lot of traffic coming through, it's it. It's just very, it's stressful, and that's it here, and the other, and I understand. There's a lot of community members, louder than all of them, so I'm very, very conflicted with it. It makes me, it makes me sad, and the, you know, traffic, private values might change because of that, or my habits. There, what might happen, there's a lot of traffic here. And with ATVs. Um, what if I just. And by opening that up, um, we can look like even if it's a road, there's gonna be. From our end over here.
One solution, we have a similar situation, we started, yeah, so we had to take down some trees and then. So, you know, you're still maintaining that privacy and. And it's also really good because you gotta clear sight of, uh, look safety, because you can see people. And you can't take people bicycles or ATVs where they're bringing anything.
I think there's, is there something from them like that?
Um, talk to the hydro system, okay? You know, we partner up and do something to, you know. Of course, you want that. And, um, just in the, in your perspective, from the teams going up there and flying up there and jumping.
I own the house next to Jane. I have two children, one is autistic. And.
My grandson's autistic.
I worry, I I worry a little bit about that, and I also worry about, um, other kids like James Rancher, that people are in play.
And and like I said, we can also move them out, you want us to turn it off. At whatever point to stop the traffic, when you get to school, whatever.
I would. I would also rather see a solid fence go up there than with a chain. Much, much, much better, and it'll help keep the noise down.
It's a security issue for us, just people being in those places.
Well, that, you know, and it's it's never been kept out. I mean. You find anything from meetings to condoms to everything else in there. And, you know, it's, so it's never been kept out.
A lot kind of washes out.
Yeah, it does, and then you get everybody that throws their cups in their bags on our lawn, on the street, you know, or whatever. Um, so I'd rather not see any access. Uh, that it will even remotely go through, not even a gate to some of the past room.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's a time, whatever the time will prove. Even, like I said, we've done that as, as some have done it, it's an error. As the whole line. And we'll be able to. See a rep. A lot of, on the other side, the Circle K, we're gonna take down those trees, which is almost, you can access immediately.
So there has to be that the tanks are replaced, am I correct? So the issue is how to do that safely? Am I correct?
Um, correct, as far as, you know, the majority of the. The trees being removed is really a separate issue from.
Okay, so it it's what needs to be concretely in place to make the residents in the area feel comfortable. To make sure that it's safe, but the tanks have to, it has to happen, so the noise has to happen, the construction has to happen. It's like ripping off a bandage, you gotta do it, so it's just a matter of how that's done. And whether or not the traffic goes through this particular entrance into the residential area, correct?
No, Duncan.
And only Duncan travel.
Yeah, there's no way you're gonna be able to do that. How how are you gonna stop any other traffic going through there?
And we already heard, if you post the gate, like if they're closed, if Duncan is closed, it'd be possible to get up, they open. The traffic was open, um, I think we could, we could at least keep out vehicles, only have traffic or bicycles for the member in the very.
And they do a really good job, job in closing, you know, with that fencing, it's not just a little, you know, fencing.
But you're still, how are you gonna stop, if I go up to Matt's store to get solder? And wanna drive out there, how you stopping?
Once in the lane, and in prime time, there's gonna be cars in the front.
And what where what what provisions have you made for the Duncan Donut trucks that are coming in? The semis.
So there's something to have that room to get like.
How they're gonna get turned around?
So that's another back, like I'm going to, we want to park the store. And so okay, isn't, we're gonna walk into park, and if our truck, our warehouse, park the truck there. Somebody will do that, and we have the equipment to do. Because when they unload the trucks, it's really huge.
Again, I'm gonna be very careful of the comments to make as storm manager, this one, one o'clock, and two, it's conflict of interest, but again, all our delivery drivers are in the air. Uh, as the standard right now, and I just, because I'm back in anyway. So they'd be pulling straight out onto Central Street, that's been one going through, they've been practicing with. Company that delivers, uh, plenty of stores in the area, they back into ninety percent of the locations, could easily exit, that's just doing the same things, but it's not gonna be. Any different, the only concern is it's obviously, if they have line, they allow, they're applying, um, they've done it before. Sure that they do it again, you know, they get the money to have CLs hazardous places, so I'm sure that they can handle it. Uh, we've also been, as, uh, Tony, Tony has been stated, uh, the building next door, uh, has, we've also known to park across, right, a parking lot. And drive on the fourth left, fourth left, across the street, and then look back and. So there are situations that is valid, um. As we'll state.
I'm wondering what the number of working hours, we have, who is that?
Uh, typically, roughly seven to five could go, obviously, in the residential area, we lose track, or seven. Um, you know, the right times when the crunch is on, where, you know, we may go towards our. Seven to five is the.
I don't think the answer to that question, you know, I get sidetracked, we can gate that in also fencing. I'll get out to stop right up. And that's how we could do here. Because when they fence in all the construction areas, they can then, and you're like, it was kind of getting lost.
So you're gonna put it on the Medway side?
Yes.
Because I don't know how many of you have that. I don't know how many people have noticed recently, I have, because I'm very concerned about. The line that we're already getting, hold on, Central Street. When traffic is backed up and you still got these guys coming in fifty miles an hour, then they get Duncan Donuts and they realize it's Duncan Donuts.
And we do have a tool that we just got, it's a line buster, so we're gonna go over tablets like, um, Chick-fil-A. If you get ahead of the line, so we're hoping that speeds up the process more. I mean, actually, label on it, we can. You know, get this going, to stay open, we're actually walking away to help them, even more efficient people.
Or if you get to ask, can I have your name?
I'm Tyler Lyons. Continue, it's great. Representative Michael Metz.
Neo Extreme. Thank you.
In the market.
Oh. I'm sorry, go ahead, Charlie.
Might be a bad choice of words, but I would rather see it be forested. Rather than a gate or a, or a, a wall, we forested, you know, in other words, put the plants back in, tree, tree belt. That would just be my preference on that.
I agree with you, Charlie, but the problem was in ninety-two, when they did that, they promised us that that would be kept out. They promised us that the trees, you would never have any lights coming from Duncan Donuts over to Jackie's house. Uh, I don't know how many familiar with, when that was built, uh, they cracked the cellar in that, home that Jane owns today. Doing that job. They never, from day one, and I'm not Duncan Donuts or, or, okay, but from day one, that area has not been taken care of. I mean, the trees grew like they were supposed to, but it was supposed to be all, all. Heavily wooded, so that you wouldn't, wouldn't have that.
Basically, the line of trees closest to the tanks, so Paul now, the bottom range is red, so your pine trees. You know, you're seeing the give us a job, but you would probably be upgrading by taking down the coffees. And planting something, we can plant something in there that's more of a push type, that wouldn't just go forty feet in the air and. No, you wouldn't, where you don't get the climate protection now.
Yeah, if I may, um, we had talked about possible to do, um, we do. Circle K is a homeowner, and I'm gonna say confirmed, um, there is a contract, it's called, we're organized, so like, those are. Our long care and stuff, I can definitely say that in respect, there's that, trimming hedges is a lot easier to. Um, so hedges or bushes were set install. It probably be negotiated.
Then I would like to see that tree belt reinstated or fixed, and that be a separate discussion than the road, because I'm still really, I'm concerned about the level of traffic. And that road, and then creating that road, and that entrance there, it needs to. And the neighbor there, I know there's another neighbor on, depending whether she would, you know, comment or not to know. Yeah, so I think this, to me, as a homeowner, there's just some issues, need that tree belt and that line, and you're applying it to that, you can be the separation.
And those are, um, they are two separate issues, the Duncan Donuts thing of the road, but those trees are coming, unfortunately, with removing those tanks.
There's things that aren't often. You're gonna have some trees that don't have a lot, so that's gonna, that will get out.
Yeah, is there a?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I wanna back up just a little bit to where we were talking about traffic and ways to keep, um, traffic from going down there. Now, I understand that. It's okay, it's possible to say big trucks over X amount of times aren't allowed on a road. But is it legal to arbitrarily tell taxpayers they can't use a taxpayer road?
Not a road.
It's from Field.
Field Street ends.
Where it goes from the back of that, Circle K.
It's not a, yeah, that road.
It's always been a back path.
When I was a little girl, we used to steal some.
So that's not, that doesn't. What I'm saying is, who pays for that, whatever it is, feels, where we're talking about rerouting traffic.
That belongs to. Circle K, uh, or, I I just said, Mr. Bragman said it belongs to Urban. They own that piece of.
Property.
Property in there.
And it's drivable, okay, it's like.
When, it just, great, because it sounds, sounded to me like it was taxpayer.
No.
Okay, so no taxpayer roads are involved in.
You would come onto a taxpayer road, you would come off, off on a private lot onto, onto taxpayer road. My other concern is the, the width of the road, because I wish Ralph had been here, because I don't know how much. I don't think you can drive over that, oh, it's there, the way that it's built. And is there enough room there without getting on to the other lady's property? Uh, to put a road through there?
If we, we believe so, I've been down there, I've taken off, um, leaving, leaving some room from the edge of the catch basin. We have to take down a couple of trees there and fill in, we come out at an angle, so we'll be able to get by the catch basin and the access field. You know, it's, you know, it's taken out about fourteen feet, make a road through there.
Thank you.
It'd be easier if I put a visual representation of the area on screen.
You got one?
Does that run?
Well, it's quite a bit, I think there's a couple more in the back there.
Uh, five hundred and forty-seven feet, Southern Street, I got the.
And do I understand that you, you have. Are you on the old Duncan Donuts? That purchased that one? Right. Fuel, the original Duncan Donuts. Well, down a couple of things, yeah, okay. Oh, employees packing and stuff like that could all happen over here, even for, for Mr. Bragman's, as well as yours.
Are you talking about Chester's Chicken or Walgreens?
No, Chester's Chicken.
Chester's Chicken. Would there be a way to do? Kind of makeshift road into that next parking lot?
There you go. And it's. And it's foggy in there.
It's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, so this is a much, you know, um, we have, so Duncan's drive through. You can see that you shed, this is a little hole, but there is a second shed right here now, um, tree belt and. What a back path is literally right there, the manhole covers, it's about where this tree is right now. Um, and it runs out onto this road, so the question is, is putting a temporary road right here, this area. For the Duncan Drive, for those that were confused and don't work.
And I hear you say that that whole tree belt is gonna be removed just because of, uh, because of the tanks.
So you'll, you'll see there's two different shades, the green, the one, the one's closest, uh, sorry, I forgot today. Uh, by Jane's house, uh, those are pine trees, so it wouldn't be affected. Um, those lighter green, they're already some sort of a rose, and from the, just the edge of the curb to the trees, it's all empty. And the tanks stick beyond the curb, probably four plus feet, so I'm gonna be getting in the, the roots on those.
So for a better representation. I'll back this out so you guys can see it. So this is where the, uh, landing is, that's a real age drop. Uh, this is the tree belt that corresponds to the construction. And this is the canopy, canopy where the fuel pump's set.
Now, that's all getting new fire suppression system.
You're talking about the can, being probably upgraded as necessary. But. I believe it's up to go now.
It is. Are you putting in bigger tanks?
Yes, you're putting in. I guess you're putting in two twenty thousand gallon tanks, I believe it's a twelve thousand. And right now you've got three twelve there. So the newer tanks, are they gonna be turned to that tree belt? They are. Uh, no, they're, they're. I apologize to those on Zoom that couldn't see it, uh, I grabbed the screenshot, this is the tree belt we're here to talk about.
And that will come down before construction starts?
Yes, yes, correct, and I won't take down any more than we have too, but you can see that with the, the concrete pad there now. The new pad will extend in both directions, wider, accommodate the new tanks.
And before a decision is made by the board, can we have something in writing as to the fencing? The type of fencing, the height of the fencing, and what would be able to be put in for a barrier? Before the construction starts, or would it have to go in after?
To replacement?
Yeah. Could we have that in writing as to what would be agreeable between the residents and the?
Um, I, I can say from a gap that Stephen Point that will replace the, the trees with more suitable. Which I had, and I know you folks were talking between Circle K and Dunkin Donuts. Well, they made an agreement thirty years ago, I wasn't around, but, um.
I know you were twelve, right?
Yeah, all right. Negative seven. So, uh, I, again, I can't comment on this. I assume nation.
Have you agreed to take care of the?
Yep.
In writing?
Uh, that was.
We're gonna be dealing with that, and I don't want to cut anybody off, we're gonna be dealing with that because there's a, uh, approval that occurred in nineteen ninety-two. July twenty-third, nineteen ninety-two, that deals with the, uh, tree belt, which is twenty-two feet wide. And then the right away for the, uh, water line for the water company is ten feet wide, total is thirty-two feet. And it extends to the extent that you can see in that photo and beyond.
So what I was discussing it was, um, they once before may put in writing an agreement to take care of that same. Tree line, and I was asking, why would it be any different if they put it in writing today? I, I heard several people say that it wasn't kept, that agreement was not kept. My question is, why would we put it in writing again if they weren't, if they're? They want not to, um, keep their agreements from time to time. Uh, well, how would we guarantee it is my question.
The guarantee part, it's not guaranteed, that's where the CEO comes in. When this all happened, it was a Jim Haskell year, he's deceased. Then we've had other people that have been CEOs, now we've got Evan Campbell. Things fall through the cracks, and it's not, Evan can jump in on this, it's not as if someone goes around and starts, you know, checking things out. Things come to the forefront when something happens and you say, oh, that's interesting. Like the vehicle traffic that's, uh, entering onto, uh, Field Street or coming off of Field Street into the property. And it's stipulated in the nineteen ninety-two approval that no vehicle traffic is to be permitted. And the responsibility falls upon, well, now Circle K, but then it was Main Way. I believe it was Main Way under Irving, I don't know what the name might have been, Dead River. So essentially, the, uh, the, the blocking of traffic doesn't fall to the town. It does fall to the, uh, uh, property owner, but the town can do something if they so, which, uh. Rocks could be put there, things of that nature. I'm just telling you what options are possible, but it doesn't, the obligation doesn't fall to the town. It falls, it falls to the landlord, but the property certainly.
It would be just more practice. Home, you'd rather have a fence. It's trees, you gotta have trucks or, oh, and that, and that's a lot of these. You know, of course, they're gonna be more, such a consciousness, they're trying to fence. But I want that as a, no, I would not. So that would be, um, what is to ask for what you want. And then, you know, go from there, and I, I absolutely agree that hasn't been left out. Being the suburb, they have certain things, we may, uh, uh, water, it raises all over the place. Um, I, I really want to talk about the, the, you know, it's, I, I will definitely help you take care of that. You will. No, I, I need to know what the options are, like sitting here right now, like. So like winters and like, but that's like over time, like. Probably age and that's like, I did what, what you guys want and present that.
I'd like to see the hedges and the solid beds. Oh, it's, it's still the way you're really gonna cut down any. Pretty traffic ones and, uh. No, and it's supposed to. Light out as well.
Big second hand is.
Right.
We, you know, as well as I do, and we see it every day, if we open that, it will always be open unless you put something. Even a gate or something.
Temporary, not gonna eat these. I know how projects go, ten weeks. Obviously, we're holding on, we're holding on. A lot of, stuff happens, I was mechanic for a long time. Any hours, um, so I understand the side of that. So you have this, yes, it's temporary, trying to alleviate congestion, now you say, okay, ten weeks, it's just, uh. Almost December, something like that, um, you're trying to. funnel basically that traffic to just strictly Dunkin Donuts customers and strictly passing your vehicles. How many people do you see if Dunkin Donuts, um, drive through trailers? Can you figure anything? I mean, is there something, I don't usually drive, I don't, so I don't believe, I'm just, well, clearly. Now, is there something there that says, you know, limits, is there something that's limiting traffic around the back of the building already?
Um, no, but wherever you're doing this, this is your territory, it's not definite stuff that we can. Start with it, and then we're not getting to the end.
Cause they might not see that until they're in there, now we're in the other boat, whether I know where the jet ski to be serviced or something, snowmobile trail, whatever happens. And if they hit go around, what are they gonna do?
Move off to the right.
It sounds to me like it's gonna be extremely congested. You're, you're funneling, you're, you're trying to funnel all of these businesses, all this traffic. Into one little spot, and you're trying to get them to somehow find a way to squiggle and turn around and work their way out. Because they can't pass along. She's very congested, and this is a lot of holes, like.
Hence your safety concerns. That hence the safety concerns.
Absolutely, absolutely, and then you're, you're also concerned about, um. Possible water line issues and school line, I mean, that, that's. I think those are the biggest concerns, is obviously safety, you don't need people getting trapped, Jim. Stuck, somebody needs help, they can't get there, or busted two line or busted water line or something, I mean, uh. So there's a lot of variables.
I think the water line is the basic concern mainly, because it enters there. And then where it goes and how many residential properties are impacted.
Do we have any way, I mean, this is all gonna be a moment soon, over a few months, do we have any way, or any? One to ask to say? Yes, this water line will take traffic, or no it won't. Is there any definitive answer, I mean, or we just, if you're done, if they do this road, they take a chance and it breaks, paying the bill for that.
You'd have to take a look at the plans, original plans, to find out how do you get that water line, you know?
Well, I would hope, I, I don't know this, but I would hope Main Water knows about this.
I would imagine Main Water does have some idea about it, but maybe.
No, but, are they aware of this project at all?
I haven't.
I know Ralph is.
You know the variable depth gone before is yours, it's based on lower elevation.
Of what you see, like in my house, which is right beside James. It is down seven feet in my basement, so seven foot out, probably it's close to eight feet. So that's at that point right there. You can see the.
Yeah, it was quite a higher than the street.
Yes, that's a lot higher than the street, so. And since that.
That's a real old picture.
And since, you know, since it was built, um, and, and another, it's not too much of a complaint for me as it may be for Jane or concern. But that road always settles and it ruts up severely. So that your bottom, like Jackie's car, her bottom, Brooke High used to bottom right out. And then she came to see the town manager and he came in and he paved a few, about two, three inches over it or something. Tried to build it back up and it's almost right back to where it was. So there's a lot of settlement there, um, and I don't know why or where it's coming from. But, um, that catch basin is a good four foot higher than the road. Than Field Street. So.
Let me make mention about something in this nineteen ninety-two document, just so that we're all on the same page. I'll read from the document, a buffer zone is to be established along the west side edge of the property, be developed. Buffer zone will measure thirty-two feet, including the ten foot right away of Millenac Water Company, plus twenty-two additional feet contiguous to the road of power. The buffer zone is to be planted to four rows of evergreen trees suited to the northern Maine climate. Trees are to be five to seven feet tall, the rows are to be staggered so as to create a visual barrier. Between the proposed development and the adjacent residential property. The area is to be maintained to assure that a visual barrier is kept in place. That has not been the case, that's come up in comments here this evening. And then it makes mention that, uh. Excuse me. The applicant, in this case, we're talking about the Irving company. An applicant will block Field Street so as not to be used to access the property by vehicle traffic. So that responsibility falls to the individual now Circle K and the entity there. And then it makes mention about lighting, I'll just mention it, lighting at the proposed facility will not exceed one candle power. At the property line between the facility and the adjoining residential properties. I gotta admit, one candle power, I'm not really sure how much like that is per se, but I know when that emanates from that property now. Going out in all directions, I would say is significant, I don't know if you can read a newspaper, but it's significant. But the visual barrier that's established in nineteen ninety-two, and there is not a visual barrier today. It's already been mentioned that some of these trees are so tall, the lower branches have essentially lost their foliage. And they're not producing or providing a visual barrier.
So you're gonna have a copy of that?
Uh, I've got my copy and there's copies in the office, uh, Evan can, uh, can make a copy of that.
Yeah. You said on a.
And, and that property, to my understanding, still belongs to Urban, correct? So that, that is still their responsibility.
Uh, let me just make sure I understand, the entire lot is still owned by the Urban Corporation?
Well, um, I'm probably not the right person to act, at the answer to that. I think probably Circle K, I didn't know Circle K, at least the property or if they bought it out, right?
The list I have in the computer downstairs says Max can use.
Yeah, that's Circle, that is Circle K.
That's Circle K. So they bought the what? They bought everything.
As far as, and all then their names on that, on that property, on that lot.
On the property. It's their property.
Uh, no, they probably, they probably signed a contract that they had to sell something, yes.
How soon could you have those iPads and people outside? Do you have them now? And so they could actually be outside when the construction starts and be directing people either to back out or not come in or?
Safety vests on the. And they can take everything that cash.
Right.
So if you have another, so you can, you guys try that somewhere.
Yes, very well, and that was with our. We have probably the traffic coming into the street too, really.
What time do you close now, seven, eight? You could close by five without taking way too much.
Six. You know, we're, we're open to do whatever. We can still come inside.
So you're saying?
Still work outside and hold?
Yes. We have special blocks to be where.
That's a point, and you talked in November, so.
We even had like, you know, most strict things, things, things to be channeled.
Sit down and make your own.
So you're saying that somebody is gonna be there to greet your customers, I mean.
Yeah, right outside.
Right outside. So there isn't going to be a somebody pulling in there with trailer, really that. But there'd be somebody there to greet them.
You're always gonna meet that one, they're gonna do what they want, um, but you won't make them back out, you have to stop traffic and. There is some, sorry, you should. Like, I, I think it's a home, you know, it's, it's, it's. Isn't it a deal? Appreciate it, yeah, we will do our part.
Purple K owns a lot, previous as well, now actually they bought it.
And Dunkin Donuts.
Yeah, it's, okay. So. What about some signage before that, directing them into that empty lot before they even get there? Try to prevent.
You could use the enter, enter and exit signs because nobody uses. You do have, I don't really have confidence in, you know, saying people will see the sign.
Oh, no, I, I agree a hundred percent, just trying to, just a thought, maybe let some of the, or avoid someone from getting into that situation. Okay, just about having a backup, return around or something, you know what I'm saying, like, put a sign like, or that, or, or you like, between Ed River and that other lot. Saying, hey, everyone Dunkin Donuts or something. Our beer or something, you know, the, something that affect that would be possible, that would double mediated and.
We could also.
Just a thought.
We could also put one out, but.
Because whether, whether that, whether that driving is good or not, I think you're going to want to do something like that anyway.
I won't lie to you. The first, the first week will be an adjustment period for the locals, all to figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
But it usually tends to level out a little bit. People know that there's no gas there. So you know, get all the people that inadvertently pulling in there for, get gas up. Get there, because you know, of course, you get a lot of cars and you keep down there.
I was just saying it's a lot.
In the middle of a moose.
Oh, yeah. That's why I posted. That way it's in the, you know, the last.
That's why I suggested that they have the employees and stuff out there because. This is Millenark, remember? They are not going to pack over there and walk over Dunkin' Donuts. It's not going to happen.
We already have some. We have a post. AG has been working closely on coming up with a game plan, so.
They've been very vocal about. I'd say pretty much anyone town knows.
Ian, Ian. The owners have had several discussions and we are giving close contact to alleviate stress on the taxpayer.
Plus the gas situation.
Plus the gas situation. They have taken precautions from there that they can speak on themselves, but. We have to give, give them the apple notice plus.
Think if you offer them a free coffee, small coffee, park over there, they'd do it now. It does work.
I'm just wondering from any point. When you, you just got done reading what the agreement was in nineteen ninety-two, there would be no. And there would be no, can you stick to that agreement today?
Sure. Oh, yeah. I mean, we're not going to revoke it. It's been enforced for thirty years. I say it's enforced. It's been there for thirty years. Obviously, it has been enforced.
We're not going to make the final decision. Somebody else is going to do that.
By the way, you, you said you had safety.
My safety, I, I'm still concerned about. Very concerned about what that traffic call. Concerned about the water lines, concerned about that sewer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about, but. The infrastructure.
I mean. Even if you put a hundred cars a day.
Uh, that's a hundred cars that don't use that street right today. Yeah. Uh. Is there any more discussion? Uh, reason is. Getting things round.
I'm almost saying that it's not going to be our decision. These decisions were.
Which is a lack of recommendation.
Well, I mean, we. We can make a decision here tonight. And the town council can certainly override us. But essentially, the planning board can have. Uh. Their decision and if it goes to court or things like that, I hope not. But we'll, we'll let the lawyers play around with that. But we can make a decision tonight. Town council can supersede us.
What's your construction schedule? You plan on. Take a wait start in this job?
That is proposed stats September nineteenth. Gordon, Evan will be going to the.
Maybe June.
He's only been here about a while.
Oh, it's going to be one little step.
Let me, uh, ask for a motion. Uh, on this, uh, application as it is, uh. Drafted to use Field Street. Exiting the property, coming onto Field Street. Uh, we've discussed things like the infrastructure that runs along the buffer zones and things like that. Uh. I'll put in writing in the minutes today's meeting, tonight's meeting about the, uh, nineteen ninety-two agreement with the trees five to seven feet tall. Being replaced. Uh, there's options to put in shrubberies, but essentially what was done in nineteen ninety-two. Uh. I wouldn't advocate that that changed. In addition to, yes, something can be added. But. To substitute, I don't think we want to go that way tonight. That's my opinion.
Can I ask one question?
This is.
Before we do this. If that's a no, what is your plan B? Do you have a plan B?
Well, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, uh. That's, that's what affects, it doesn't affect my construction project. It affects Dunkin' Donuts, the employees, um. I would say they would probably have to shut down the.
Thank you.
Circle K is looking at.
Uh, we didn't discuss it tonight, but I, uh. This, uh, changing of the tanks has essentially. Been known since they were put in thirty years ago. And how much wiggle room do you have? Do they have to be done now? Do you have, uh, an extension that can be applied for?
There is. Um, tanks are on it, ordered and on the next minute to go. Anything's possible.
Don't leave out the traffic. Because we don't have the taste in it. That will cut down on our inside trap. Um, because we will.
Right. That's either way, you mean?
Sorry.
You're, you're not talking about. They won't come because of the setup.
Um, that's going to be cut down significantly.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
In the case of a no vote. Yeah. The copy that you have, I will be, or I will be getting a copy of the same thing that you have and being. Being, making urban and circle K where I'll be agreeing to those places. Um, I was under the assumption that it would stay in shape here. Knowing that it is a written agreement makes it a little bit easier for me to. If there is no vote. I still plan on taking that document to, um, to the IRS.
And then we can get them to pinky promise if they'll follow through.
Charlie, before we hear any motions at all. We state to you what the agenda was. Did you read that for me?
Well, essentially, the, the agenda. It's. Review or request to temporary temporarily alter eat rest in the circle K business on Central Street. Committing commercial traffic to use portrait street and Field Street to junction with Central Street. That was essentially the agenda. Then, of course, you've got the application that says in so many words, same thing. But it becomes a little bit more basis.
I, I just want to throw this out there for consideration. That we approve, make a motion to approve. The intent of the agenda. Which is what we just read. So that would allow this to go ahead as a construction job.
Okay, so you're putting a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, use of Field Street, Orchard Street for commercial traffic. Then there's a second to that. Discussion.
Nothing personal, but. You know, I, I definitely don't want to see it.
I have my concerns too about the infrastructure that's going to have to be, uh, negotiated. To get from the Circle K property to Field Street, that water line, uh. That.
It's going to get very congested.
I'm about the congestion, but that water line serves community in that area. Maybe a little bit more than I appreciate. Any more discussion on the motion?
Yes, Tony.
Yes.
Before I could ever approve it. They, uh, would have to have these conditions in blue written out. As we did in nineteen, in nineteen ninety-two, it says. The Millenark Planning Board. Approved the application upon these standard conditions. And the conditions were, some of which. Tony read. Before I could approve this. I would want to see in writing. These. Conditions. Which is several things to mention. But. Wanted to look like before, after, during, after. So I, I'm not prepared. To vote for it until. We have these. Conditions of.
Essentially, uh, what we have is, uh, our minutes, we'll have. Our minutes of this meeting that will discuss various things that came up during desire to ask. But. Reference can be made to this nineteen ninety-two document. That essentially, uh, this is to be followed, period.
This time.
Yeah, there may be some new and addition, and additional conditions.
Uh, what we.
I'm not sure that that covered them all in nineteen ninety. From the discussion that I heard here.
Well, I'd have to read the, I'd have to go with the, uh. Recording that's coming out of this Zoom platform. Had, uh, make sure I haven't missed any. Scribbling stuff down, but sometimes that leaves. There's a motion out there to, uh, a second to essentially approve the agenda item that was mentioned. Months ago. Any more discussion on that motion? Question. Show hands of, uh, those in favor and those opposed. Those of the motion. On two. Those opposed. One, two, three. I'll make four, five.
And I'm.
Thank you. Uh, I was going to ask, uh, if I can do a little wait now. If, when the, uh, uh, stream was changed, were you still hearing discussion? Were, were you still hearing discussion concerning this, uh, this meeting tonight? Uh. The stream changed, so we saw an overview of the Circle K property. Does it ring a bell for you?
Are you surprised?
Oh.
He's frozen. The, the mic didn't change at all.
So he should have heard it all.
I'd like to, um, say what I started to say before you.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Um, my vote is contingent on the same things that I've answered. If that can be fired out, I would be happy to change my vote.
Well, we are revisiting. I don't know about the changing part.
That's what I'm saying.
There's a gentleman on the screen. Charlie, Charlie. Any comments, uh, from those on the Zoom platform?
I can't understand you.
Uh, I was asking, John, if there were any comments from individuals that are attending the meeting on the Zoom platform. There's, there's a motion pending to approve the use of Field Street as indicated in the agenda. And that's what we're pending at the moment.
Uh, I'm aware of the, uh, motion and I'm not sure where it stands, but I'm not in favor of it. As it stands.
Thank you. I think we, yeah, I think we, we got that. We, we've got, uh. Seven or, seven or eight of us. Uh, and there's two approval, the rest are, uh, opposed. Any more, uh, comment? Essentially, there was, uh. Five or six in opposition.
Six to.
Six to, thank you. If not. Say a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second, anybody opposed to adjourning? Not hearing opposition. Thank you very much for coming tonight.